Okay, welcome back. We are gonna take up where we left off with Cal Waste. And I believe we're gonna go to, unless there's any other presentations, we're gonna go into public comments.
Good afternoon. Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. I want to thank our county auditor. She really studied this thing and had some good suggestions. And one of the suggestions was to do away with forcing businesses to subscribe to the service. And that occurred. And so there's two thank yous there. One, that the planning director actually pulled that out of the contract, and Rebecca caught it. Also, we have a major problem we're not talking about. We are suffering from excessive regulation from the state of California. This is not a dictatorship. Governor Brown is not Hitler. He can be talked to, so can the legislature. We need to contact RCRC, identify the changes that need to be done to make this reasonable for a rural county, like for ourselves, and then lobby it politely. Don't call them names. And if you do that, there may be other rural counties that will do this similar thing, and maybe we can have some light at the end of the tunnel. One thing for sure, this thing is gonna get worse and worse and worse unless there's some resistance. If you don't provide the resistance, who else would? Another thing, twenty years ago, we passed a tax for $100, $150 per parcel, and that was supposed to include an amount of money that would be put aside for future cell expansion. Okay, what occurred, either from bureaucracy, the losses caused by excess bureaucracy maybe, or maybe because of state regulations, we've eaten our seed corn. There is no reserve, as I understand it. It's gone. So now we have, we're facing two things. Talking about six years down the road, we need to find a source for that money, and I don't know what the, you know, what can be done about that. So it looks like the numbers that were shown of comparison rates with other counties is what it would be if we had a substantial increase in fees, maybe up to 40 percent.
Thirty seconds.
Then it would line up to all those numbers, and then we can be compared to the other counties. That was disclosed to me. And so, number one, the giant in the room is the state. Don't walk away from that one. Thank you.
I'm Pete Pedelford. I've been a resident of Arnold for 28 years permanently. I have also had a business that I started and turned it into years, multi-million dollar business, and Nextel bought me out. So I got a little bit of idea about cost factors and profit margins and so on like that, that you have to deal with. When I moved up here, I was 47 years old, I retired, and in a year I was bored. So I went to work for the Struck Brothers in this company, the waste management there. They were the ones that basically started up there with it, in Arnold area. A couple of years, Mr. Downey and Rattle came involved in the business there. And Rick was a pretty good friend of mine, and we talked a lot of times about the cost factor of this business and trying to make a profit at it on this mountain. And the issues that have been said here are very real. The distance of travel for collection is a killer. It's a killer on your bottom-line figure. One, we know that the fuel prices have just gone ridiculous. Diesel used to be able to buy less than gas, and now it's the same or more. It's a killer for you with your equipment. And also, the mountain area is hard on the equipment, and there's a lot of repair to it, which was the driving factor. Mr. Downey and I sat down a lot of times, tried to figure out, how can we do this thing at a more, better cost factor? How can we make our routes work better? How can we make things happen? We just couldn't make it work out. We tried a few things in doing different things. I drove all types of his equipment all the time for him. We tried different things, and it just kept coming out in a negative on him. We've had four companies now in that garbage reclamation up in that area. There's a reason why we've had four companies. The first three realized they just can't make it work in there. Now, the Downey-Raddle situation lasted longer than the Strucks did, and lasted longer than the waste management did. So these people left for that. The profit wasn't there for them to do it. I've had many conversations with Mr. Vacarez about a lot of things. He's been very much a community person. He really, really has got a heart for the communities that he works in with his businesses. I also see that the man has always looking towards, what are the issues we're gonna meet in the future?
Thirty seconds.
And how can we meet those issues? And a lot of our discussions have been with that, and I found him to be a very creative individual to do this. And I think he would be the biggest asset to us, dealing with our problems that we face here in our county in the future. So I really hope that you guys will consider these factors when you look at this, and you supervisors will take a good look at this whole picture of how it happens. I've been on the ground floor, and I've been in the business end, so I can see the issue there. Thank you for your time.
Okay, any other public comments?
My name is Peter Race from the 5th District of Genilin. First of all, I resent that you guys always put on the spot. You gotta do it right now. This damn thing's been cooking for how many months? It's not fair to you, and it's definitely not fair to your constituents. You want uniform rates? The cost is not uniform. So somebody's gonna subsidize somebody else. When? And things will happen then. So there's awful lot of things that are open, that you don't know what's gonna happen. Again, index, public, private indexes, that you're gonna have to adjust the rates and so on. And cost goes up, the gasoline's gonna go up. Right now, even though not show that some of your staff agency, they're saving a whole bunch of money on gas costs, but doesn't show on their, cost of their services. There's an option, that because it's so close and tight, and they've been working on so long, getting rid of those trees, that's gonna be a job for what? Ten, 15, 20 years? Why don't you give these gentlemen, Cal Waste, we just spent straight with you, honest with you, an opportunity to take a look at it? They in a business of doing it. Maybe they can turn a profit on it that can be shared with you. Maybe the efficiency of combining all those dead trees and the service they providing, maybe overall, a big picture, they could be more efficient, and it would benefit your constituents. Your constituents do not get 5.1, 5.5 cost of living increase like the schmucks in Sacramento do. Be fair to your constituents. And talk about cost going up? I just got a surprise. I don't recall, you folks approved it, but appealing to anything at the planning commissions went from $100 to $500. I wonder which one of you wanna take the credit for it?
Thirty seconds.
Okay.
I made that.
You did. Good. Okay. I know where you live. Get efficient, folks. I mean, to me, it looks like a turf war, but a lot of the staff, for whose benefit? You got an opportunity that you can make money if a private business partners with you folks, with the county, for the benefit of your constituents, where you can get rid of the trees, and maybe use that funds, in a business sense, for the waste. When they have a commitment to do business with you for the next 10, 15 years or something.
Thanks, Peter.
You're more than welcome.
Thank you.
I still wanna know who approved that 500% increase on appeal cost.
Yep, I did that too.
Good, good. I know you guys too.
Any other public comments? Really? Okay. We'll bring you back to the board. Any further discussion on board?
Let everybody else go first. Since I'm on the solid waste.
No discussion.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
On all four of them, or number one?
I think Steve has some stuff on that. No, I mean, if there's no discussion, I'm good with it.
Maybe we could define what motions we need to act on separately, or all four?
All together, right?
All together?
It's a whole ideal.
Okay.
So I'll just do this then, okay? I'm gonna read it out. So Public Works approved and authorized the board chair to sign an agreement that is in substantial and legal conformance with the attached agreement between the county and California Waste Systems LLC, Cal Waste, for solid waste collection, hauling, disposal, recyclables, processing for a term ending December 31, 2026, for the entire county and. Number two, make findings that pursuant to county code 8.12.300A. It is the opinion of the board that Cal Waste is best qualified to render proper and efficient solid waste collection and hauling services. It best serves the county's interests in economy and efficiency to approve Cal Waste application for an exclusive long-term solid waste and hauling permit. And three, safety and well-being of the county are furthered by entering into this agreement with Cal Waste. Four, by this action, the board supervisors rescind resolution 91.152, or dash 152, finding that the credit outlined in this resolution is no longer required in terms and conditions of this agreement. So may I have a motion on that, please?
Mr. Chair, so moved to all four issues.
All right.
I'll second.
Motion by Supervisor Olivera, second by Supervisor Fonte. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Thank you. All right. Number nine.
Item nine is from the library, to adopt a resolution to create a designated fund for the county of Calaveras Library for the purchase of books and media.
As you know, the Calaveras County Library System exists to meet the information needs of the citizens of our county. And one of those, one of the ways we meet that need is by purchasing books and resources. For many years, the Friends of the Library, which is 501(c)(3) nonprofit, has been giving money to the library for purchase of materials. As I was finishing up my budget this year, I discovered that often those donations are not noted in the reporting system, because the system was to order things and give the bill, the invoice for those resources directly to the Friends of the Library, and they paid those bills, and so there was no record of those purchases. I don't like that. I would like the donations of the Friends of the Library to be transparent. I would like the donations of the Friends of the Library to be acknowledged, which they can be if they are seen. And I would like to reduce the work of the treasurer of the Friends of the Library by paying our own invoices through our financial system for the county. I think transparency, acknowledgement, reduction of labor, but also, I would like to be able to see how much money I'll have to buy resources, because then I can do better buying, better planning, as we move forward. The Friends of the Library are 501(c)(3), as I said, and so people can donate through them and get tax credit, and they like that. But they would like to know that the money that they're giving is going to be used for the purpose that they are asking for, to buy materials. So that's why I'm asking for a designated fund, because the designated fund, those funds, will go into that account and stay there and be designated for that purpose, and not be taken back by the general fund, as much as I would love to give them to you, I wouldn't really. But they will be secure for the donors. So I'm asking for a designated fund for the purchase of materials and resources for the library.
You really are a very nice person, aren't you? You didn't just wanna come up and spank us with that.
No. No one's spanking you.
Get you in line in a nice way.
I have a question. I love the idea, because I think so many times donations get made, and there's no formal recognition of that. That comes maybe from the county. Certainly, it comes from the librarian and staff and that sort of thing. But do we have designated funds for our other volunteer groups, like the Humane Society and the Sheriff?
I'm not aware of it.
For the animal services, we do. For the Friends of the Sheriff, I do not believe we do.
Literacy has a designated fund.
Yeah, the Literacy does. The Friends, the animal shelter does. There are certain donations that come in that go towards, into a designated fund. I use for spay and neutering.
Well, you know, because so many times these donations get made, and if we don't see them, you know, we don't recognize maybe what the general fund could be giving, if it's always through a donation and we don't see that. So I love the idea, and very supportive of the library doing that. And hopefully, we can look at some county policies for other kinds of donations for other departments. Thank you. Any other questions?
I agree. That's a very good point.
Is, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there any reflection on the donation being tax deductible on the donor? If it's submitted, there's no?
No, because the donation is made to the Friends of the Library, then the Friends of the Library in turn donate to the county.
So the Friends of the Library have a reporting.
Yes.
And this would become part of the library budget moving forward?
Isn't that kind of the way, though, that it has been? I mean, Rebecca, you've been, you've been having them do that, it just hasn't been like, uniform, right?
No, actually, what we found, and this isn't specific to the library, but what we were finding is that people with all good intentions were actually paying for services and other activities outside of our entire financial system. So while the department had, or the department knew what they were getting, whether it be equipment, or supplies, or staffing, or whatever it was, I had no idea, the administrative office had no idea, HR had no idea, you as the board had no idea. So we did work with the administrative office two years ago, about updating a donation policy that had been in effect for several years. It's just, it, nobody, nobody used it. So we brushed it off, brought it back forward, we brought it up at the department head meeting, we've been trying to educate departments that there's a reason why that policy exists. Number one, no department actually has the authority to accept donations. It's actually the board of supervisors, and then the board gives that authority to the CAO, that can happen. But what you don't wanna have happen, I've heard kind of horror stories, in one county, a department accepted a helicopter. And they said, oh, it's free, but...
Really, Ridge County?
It was a wealthy county, but it's extremely expensive to actually have a helicopter. So it's like getting a free dog. It's not really free.
You still gotta feed it.
Yeah, you still gotta feed it and everything. So that's why we brushed that policy off, too, for a couple of reasons. Number one, to protect the county, that we weren't accepting land unbeknownst to the board of supervisors, or equipment that was extremely expensive and had additional costs associated with it. But the other part is that we need to make sure that we're including that on our financials, those donations, and the value of those donations. And then, most importantly, that we're recognizing those groups or those individuals that are making donations to the county. Because we do have some very active groups, the Friends of the Library, the Friends of the Sheriff, you know, Calaveras Humane Society, Focus, among many other support groups in the county, that really help our operations. And so we wanted to make sure that we gave them a voice, and that we gave them recognition. And so that's what we've been trying to educate departments, to utilize that donation policy for those reasons.
And with the smaller donations, or even larger donations, a designated fund, like what is being requested here today, is a good methodology. But Ms. Collins wrote that all donations are supposed to be, come through the administrative office, with the administrative office reporting to the board. But if we're not made aware of them, then it's hard to report. The larger ones, we usually bring to the board, such as when the modules were donated by Focus and CHS. In fact, at the next board meeting, the sheriff will be coming forward with a number of donations that Friends of the Sheriff's Department have made.
It's important.
And for this year, as I discovered that these donations had been made outside of our reporting system, I gathered that information and sent a request to the CAO to accept those donations, so that my final report reflected all of the donations that the Friends of the Library had given this year.
I have a question, because I think we're all familiar with seeing $20,000 donated from this organization X, Y, B, and it comes before us, and we approve it. So what happens when somebody hands her a check for $500? Does that have to come before us, or you just?
No, no, it does not. And this will allow for the accounting. So if the Friends of the Library give the county librarian the $500, it will be deposited, deposited into the designated fund, we will have an accounting of it, and we can talk about that each year, when we're doing budget, that X amount of dollars has been deposited into this designated fund for the purposes of purchasing books and media, and that she is intending to use X amount of dollars of that in her budget to purchase books.
It also highlights books that are doing, doing the giving to.
Yeah, it justifies all the monies out. I understand that part of it.
Any questions?
No? Thanks for bringing it forward.
Any public comments on this?
Haven't seen you guys in a while. Hi. I have a quick question, because I think that's wonderful, and I do give to the Friends of the Library. But what I don't wanna have happen, and I just wanna know if this is a problem, is that if it goes through the county, that somehow the county's budget for those departments, like the library, then get reduced by the amount of people donate. So I just wanted to clarify that, and make sure that that's, if there's something written.
I would give it after the budget.
Okay, that works.
So just to put Vicky's mind at ease, that's why we call them designated funds, because we're putting a designation specifically on that fund. It's not a general-use fund. So when, when we talk at budget time about the committed balances, the restricted balances, the commitments are basically reserves that are made locally, by local legislation. So you are stipulating that those funds in, those monies in those funds can only be used for X. And it's spelled out very specifically in the resolution that gets passed. Now, five years from now, could you, as the board of supervisors, go and look at all of those funds that you committed and say, you know what? We don't wanna have those commitments anymore, we wanna pull them all back in. You do have the authority to do that. So whatever the authority was to establish that fund, that same authority can unestablish those funds. But yes, so long as those funds exist, and the board continues for that commitment, those funds will be secured for those purposes.
And if we should, or a board in the future does that, they have the option of saying, we're not giving.
Right.
And if you...
That could be real bad.
Haven't read the agenda item. This says, "For the purchase of books and media."
Yep.
So, yeah, it could be used for, to put in a new drinking fountain, or things of that nature.
Yeah. So the other thing is, on the flip side, you know, there have been times where a department says, oh, well, I have this money sitting in this fund, and I need to buy what, a drinking fountain. And we'll look at the designation, and we'll say, oh, well, you know what? You can't buy a drinking fountain, you can only buy...
Books and media.
Books and media. So my office also does keep that in check as well.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this, this fund will roll over into the next year.
Yep. It keeps its own balance.
This is not going to disappear, or...
Nope. It just keeps going and accumulating.
Thank you.
What is the, what is the percentage for admin?
None.
No?
No.
Not admin?
No, administrative costs?
Administrative, yeah.
Zero.
That's a good deal. All right.
I'd get you on the other side.
No doubt.
That wasn't quite what I was asking.
What?
So the answer was, so let's say you budgeted $50,000 for the libraries, and let's say they get a donation of $10,000. Will that ever then reduce their $50,000 to $40,000, because they've got this $10,000? That was kind of the question. And that would be a concern with the Friends of the Sheriffs as well, anything that's donated outside the county. So I was just curious on that.
Your key word was, would that ever, going forward?
And that's fair enough. I just think that's something that is always a concern.
So this money that's being donated specifically for the purchase of books and media, unless the board decided otherwise, would only be used for the books and media?
That's not my question.
But it, does that mean that that line item, that the general fund contribution to the library may not put anything in books and media line item for purchasing, five years from now, for another recession in this cutbacks? And that what doesn't mean? It means that she will have the ability, because that money will be set aside, to use that money for books, in lieu of a general fund contribution for books?
Yeah.
I think that's what you're asking, is...
Well, and maybe I should just make a comment, that the hope is that those things don't take away from budgeted items, but I understand the budget. You only have so much money every year, you may cut the budget for other purposes, but...
And in the past, Vicky, quite frankly, in the past, when we hit the recession, we said we were going to have to make certain reductions to the library, because the general fund could only fund at a certain level. The Friends of the Library came in and said, you know, we don't want you to reduce the hours in the branch libraries, we will contribute X amount of dollars to keep those branches open. So there is that, there is some flexibility, but it's all depending on what's happening each year in the budget.
Okay.
Your question, as I understand it, Vicky, is, we say we have $50,000 for the library, and then you're looking through the budget, you go, oh, we've got $10,000 for, in this designated fund. And then somebody suddenly says, well, then we'll only put $40,000, right? And that's kind of what you're getting at.
Well, yeah, well, it would be the term to supplant, but you would always, I know you would use the money for what it was designated for, I'm not worried about that. But it's just that then does something else suffer, because, anyway.
Probably.
You know what I'm saying, so.
Yeah.
I just had to say something.
If I could just say something to assuage her, actually, the board voted this year to match those funds. So it was, it actually served as an incentive for the board to give more money to the library. So that happened this year, it won't always happen, I realize that, but we are grateful for that.
All right. Any other public comments?
Make a motion to approve?
A second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Fonte, a second by Supervisor Kearney. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. So we have four, and one, absent.
Item 10 is from the administrative office, to authorize the board clerk to set the agenda for the first Resource Conservation District RCD meeting. That will include possible approval of a grant application regarding tree mortality.
All right, before we start that, Dave, secondly, it'd be great to have, like, Friends of Public Works Roads. That would be good.
I don't quite know how to add to that.
Sorry. Just had to throw that in there. Okay, go ahead, Brian, sorry.
Good afternoon, Brian Moss, administrative office. This item before you, as stated, is authorizing the board clerk to set an agenda for the first RCD meeting. The board will be appointing the RCD board on the 27th, I think. be appointing the R C D board on the 27th. I think you're already aware of that. There is a, an opportunity under, several opportunities under what they call S R A funding, State Responsibility Area funding through Cal Fire. Several of our fire districts and utilities are applying for this for tree mortality. And this ties in with, with what we've discussed in the past, options for actually getting on private properties to fall trees. The R C D, people that are interested in the R C D became aware of this. They were interested in actually applying as an R C D. The problem is, is the application is due on the 28th. Since this time, the, the agenda, we've had meetings with the fire districts and utilities, and one of the options is, is the Fire Safe Council stated, since they're already applying for five separate grants for tree mortality, they would be willing to assist the R C D once appointed through an M O U to actually apply this year, which would be great. At, at the time of the writing of this staff report, we didn't have that option. But it's still imperative, I think, that, that, that the board hopefully pass this, this agenda item, so that it at least can be discussed at the R C D meeting, should they meet on the 27th. Again, I've put the, the people with the R C D, that are interested in the R C D, in touch with the Fire Safe Council. I don't know where that stands today. But this, this item would allow your board clerk to actually put that agenda item together ahead of time. So we highly recommend that.
Okay. Thank you. Any public comments? All right. Board comments?
Yeah, I think that just having the R C D have the ability to approve that grant application, if they deem that that's something they want to do, and they can, they figure out they can do it, that they should have that option. So that's why I wanted to make sure that it was officially approved by us, so we, since we haven't adopted, we haven't appointed the committee members yet for R C D, so it's kind of a chick and egg problem. So that's why it's on today's agenda.
It's gonna be a quick birth.
Yeah.
We're gonna help along with this agenda.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay. Second. All right. And so I gotta tell you that I agree. I think that, I think it's really great that the R C D folks, once we appoint them, can have something that, to just, you know, get right down to it, and become an asset immediately. And so this is just an opportunity for our county. Especially for, as many, as many issues that we have around tree mortality, and the burn tree removal, and that sort of thing, might as well let them go ahead and jump right into the frying pan. So, so I have a motion by Supervisor Ponte, a second by Supervisor Wright. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Great, thank you. Don't we have a citizen to thank for doing this grant, am I?
It was, Pat McGreevy was working on the grant. Diane, I think, was the one that brought it forward, the idea, right Diane, brought it forward, the idea of, of putting this on the agenda?
I, I needed direction from someone who could give me direction.
We wanted to put it on the agenda, and show the sheriff we could, because there's no R C D, so.
Well, thank you to all, to all that were involved in making that happen.
Yeah, that's good.
It was a team effort, yeah, that's for sure.
Great.
Thanks, Brian. All right.
Item 11 is from the administrative office to authorize the board chair to sign a letter of support for the California Association of Resource Conservation District's application for funding for removal of trees on private lands due to tree mortality.
This again is an R C D related item. I was contacted approximately a week ago by a representative of the C A R C D. And they are applying for $10 million in grant funding statewide, to, again, be able to pass some monies down to local R C Ds throughout the state of California to address tree mortality. As such, of course, now that the electorate has, has approved the R C D, and it's a matter of the board appointing the R C D board, we actually have a mechanism in the county, for the first time, to actually access some of these funds. So with that said, we're recommending a support letter, a letter of support is signed by the chair of the board, to, to go ahead and support C A R C D's application, because some of those monies can come back to our local R C D.
Okay. Any public comments on that? Board comments?
Make a motion to approve?
Okay.
Second?
I have a motion by Supervisor Ponte, a second by Supervisor Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be retained in non-consroversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may present, request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Is there a consent agenda item from the public, anybody, or any, any person from the public that wishes to, to pull a consent agenda item?
Item 14.
14? Any others?
Sheriff? I don't see Sheriff DeMossio here. He's just up outside.
He's here.
Yes, sir.
You gonna pull an item?
Sure. Captain Jim Macedo from the sheriff's office. Can we please pull item number 15? Just for recognition purposes.
All right, good.
All right, so can I have a motion on the remainder of the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion by Supervisor Kearney.
Second.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Ponte. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have item 14.
It's from the board of supervisors to authorize the board chair to approve the attached letter per the request of Utica Water and Power Authority in support of Assembly Bill 1979.
Good afternoon. Thank you for taking that item off. I know you got a crowded agenda today. I appreciate the time. Excuse me. Also want to thank Shirley for pulling this together so quickly. This was very much a last minute request, and, and her, she was very accommodating in getting this on the agenda for us. Real quick background, I, I know one of the interesting things I've learned in, over three years of working with U W P A is, not a lot of people in the county even know who we are. But we, you know, sole purpose of U W P A is delivering water to Union Public Utility Districts, which serves Murphy's and the irrigators around Murphy's, and to the City of Angels Camp. And we also serve about 15 irrigators and ranchers directly off of our system. In, in achieving that purpose, we are primarily funded by hydropower generation from two small hydropower plants. The, the last four years of drought have been really rough. Less water coming down the hill means less water to generate electricity with, less product that we have to sell. And in addition to that, the power market has been declining over the same, the same period of time. So we've had sort of a perfect storm of financial problems at U W P A in the last couple of years, to the tune of roughly 40 percent budget deficits, which ends up getting passed on to Union Public Utility District, and the City of Angels, and their ratepayers. And we've done everything we can to streamline, cut costs. You know, we're as lean as we can be, and it's a revenue issue. It's not a, it's not a management issue. The, what the, what this bill does, we were, we were able to get a lot of support from Assemblyman Bigelow, and working with his office authored a bill for us that will enable the larger of our two plants, the Murphy's powerhouse, to get into a much better power purchase agreement, more than double our revenue from that power plant, and go a long ways towards addressing our revenue issues. It's been, it's been a long haul, but we made it through the Assembly, made it through the Senate without, without a no vote, and it's on the governor's desk right now. What we've been told is, the more support we can get from local agencies, the better. So what we've done is drafted a letter that we hope the supervisors will, will adopt, and we'll get that to Governor Brown tomorrow, with, with the blessing of the board of supervisors. So that's a background on, on what this is about, and happy to take any questions, and really appreciate any support you have.
Okay. Any public comments? None. Board comments? Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Kearney, and a second by Supervisor Ponte. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Got it. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
Okay, item number, agenda item, consent agenda item number 15.
From the sheriff's office to accept donations from the Friends of the Calders County Sheriff's Office totaling $23,253.43, and recognition of their support to the county sheriff's office.
All right. Sorry about that. I got about four things going on at one time. Good afternoon. My name is Chris Hewitt, Lieutenant with the Sheriff's Office. First off, thank you for listening to us today. We asked that you approve this donation from the Friends of the Calders Sheriff's Office. But most off, what we're gonna do is, is thank Candace Kisi, the other board members of the Friends of the Calders County Sheriff's Office, and we would like to have them recognized for all the support that they provided us over the years. This year, we've asked for over $23,000 in equipment, and that's what we're hoping to get. So. One more thing, and I think it's very important to note this. Other than the board members on the Friends of the Sheriff, we want to congratulate and thank all the supporters of that organization, all the membership, all the people we get donations from.
All right.
Questions?
Lieutenant, this, you're talking $22,000. Is this the list of items that is designated?
Yes.
Requested?
Oh, sorry about that. Candace is on her way also. She's about 10 minutes out. Yes, sir. So we've, we put in for equipment for Detective Division, equipment that they really need to process crime scenes. We've asked for some additional equipment for defensive tactics, and for training. We're in need of updating our first aid kits. Right now, we pretty much use an ammo can filled with Band-Aids. This will give us the ability to actually respond for a critical incident such as shootings. So there's, these new items that will enable us to take care of those types of injuries. And the last thing would be traffic cones, and we use those for conducting our mandatory emergency vehicle operations training. Right now, we use whatever we can find, whether it be Cal Fire, or our sheriff's volunteer unit. But we need quite a few cones, and we usually don't have enough, so this will enable us to conduct that training.
So you said, you say that Candace is about 10 minutes out or so?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Actually, I'd like to figure out a way to wait for her, because she's one you want to recognize, right?
Well, if I knew how to dance, I'd do a song and dance for you, but I'm not very good.
Go ahead. Why don't we just-
All right.
Well, why don't we take a 10-minute recess? I gotta sit up anyway.
Why don't we take a 10-minute break? You wanna talk first? You wanna hold, you wanna talk now, or hold your words?
It's the pleasure of the board. I was just gonna describe, I think, one of the more useful items on here, the board, but I can certainly wait to do that.
All right. And then after that, we'll take a break.
Okay. Item number five, or excuse me, item number six, the individual first aid kits, specifically the combat application tourniquets. We did some research on this, and obviously the country's been involved in conflict, and some of the medical field training lessons learned overseas, is that if you can apply tourniquets quickly, and specifically tourniquets in the area of gunshot wounds, that you could, basically, you're, you're saving lives that would otherwise have been lost. So that's something that we wanted to put in each one of our patrol cars, and have our staff have those readily available in the event that staff's hurt. But we're also, you know, excited about the possibility of maybe saving some citizens' lives, that may, you know, that we may come across that, that have received some sort of significant injury. Sometimes, just due to our proximity, we beat fire and ambulance personnel to scenes. So once we get those, we'll be training with those, and hopefully, those will be a really invaluable tool, and hopefully, we can come back with some, some life-saving stories for the board.
And real quick, not to take away from the Friends of the Sheriff, but I have some board members asked to meet our new school resource officer. He was at an appointment this morning, so I have him now. If you don't mind, we can take a minute, and I can just introduce him real quick.
Sean?
This is Deputy Sean Chikini. He's taken our position as a school resource officer. He started on the 25th of this month. He's gonna be handling all the schools in the county, with the exception of Brett Hart and Mark Twain, because those are within the city limits of Angels Camp.
Okay.
So.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Awesome. I'm really happy to meet all of you guys, so it's, it's very happy to be, be a part of it. I'm, I'm excited.
And I have received numerous emails from a lot of the principals already, that they're glad that he's in the schools, that he has come back, and they have met him, and there are still some schools that are still looking forward to meeting him. So, as being a school resource officer myself, as most of you know, it's taxing to deal with all 17 schools, so he'll do his best. Thank you.
Well, and so this-
Be a wide decision.
And this, this is, this is, I mean, it's, it's great that it's here now. This was budgeted in 2014.
It was.
And we, you know, we're lucky to get to this point, where we now have him in the schools. I think it's a good time for it.
And I took over in 2005 as a school resource officer. In 2004 and prior, we had two school resource officers, one for each side of the county, and that's my goal, is to get back to that, too.
You know where we're going, don't you?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna take a few minutes break until Candace gets here, so that we can recognize her. Happy to do that, so. Thank you.